If I could have everybody's attention. This Fairfield County Governmental Complex County Council Meeting has been called to order. Today's date is Monday, September 23rd, 2019 at 6:00 PM. Before I call for the approval of the agenda, I understand that some council members may think otherwise as far as the second public comment session. Does any council member want to make a motion to amend the agenda? If no council member wants to make a motion to amend the agenda, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
It's been moved and properly seconded.
Any discussion?
Yes. One of the things, to make sure that I'm correct, I thought there was an ordinance stating that the second comment was had to be on the schedule, on the agenda. Okay, so will someone explain to me why that is not the case?
Mr. Morgan, do you want to elaborate, please, sir?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, members of council, there is a resolution that 2018-04, which provides for the bylaws of Fairfield County Council, and it specifically indicates that the chairman has the responsibility for setting the agenda as it relates to any and all items that are on the agenda up to and including the second public comment session. So if the chairman does make the decision to not have that second public comment session on there, there's not an ordinance that requires it.
So is there ordinance anywhere? Why do we start having the second comment section?
Unfortunately, it was prior to my coming into this role, was Fairfield County Attorney, was when the second came in. So I can't answer that question. I apologize.
Any discussion, Ms. Goines?
From my research, I found out, I think it was in 2013, November, that that particular council did provide that additional comment session in there in the bylaws, but it's not something that has to be mandatory or just mandated. But that's how it came about. There was just one, and then along the way, they decided to add another comment session in there.
Thank you. No further comments. All those in favor approve of the agenda? Any opposed? As have it, six to zero. Also, make a note that Mr. Pauli stated he may be late due to another event he had coming. Now down to our invocation. I ask Reverend Rick Gibson to please lead us in invocation, please.
May we pray. Father of glory of ages past and of the glory that we feel and see right now, we thank you for your awesome presence. We thank you for your power of deliverance. We thank you for the safety and sovereignness that we get as a result of you and your redeeming power. And as we gauge into our own lives, Lord, we pray now for wisdom and virtue. We pray for those talents and characteristics, God, that keep our hearts and minds stayed at ease and at peace. We lift up to you tonight, all of these that have gathered here. We lift up the servants, the public servants, the ones that have taken an oath to uplift and portray good deeds and do these things that are not only pleasing to those that have great wealth, but also pleasing to the one of low estate. And God, we pray for these that come, and they come, God, with reasons of their own. We ask you, God, to season our conversations with salt so that we'll be able to give a man a decent answer. And then, God, we just pray for the wisdom that we can come together and work collectively as a unit. Let not our hearts differ on the things that are good for the county, but let our hearts be in agreement on those things that are fair and just. We thank you for hearing our prayer, and we thank you, God, for every heart and home that's here tonight. Please be the peace in our hearts. Be that tangible thing that all of us need, and we all need love. Help us, God, to love one another as you have loved us all. In Christ Jesus' name, we pray and say, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Gibson. Now down to item four will be the approval of September 9th, 2019 minutes. Do I have a motion?
It's been moved and properly seconded.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? The approvals have it six to zero. Now down to our public presentations. We have a proclamation recognizing October 6th through 12th, 2019, as National Fire Prevention Week. I think, Ms. Davis, would you mind reading some excerpts from it, if you wouldn't mind, please?
Whereas the county of Fairfield is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting Fairfield County, and whereas fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire. Whereas Fairfield County residents may have less than two minutes to escape to safety when the smoke alarm sounds, therefore residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will be more likely to survive a fire. Whereas Fairfield County residents in a real emergency should get low and go under the smoke to get out quickly, residents should get out and stay out, never going back inside the home for people, pets, or things. Now therefore be it resolved that we Fairfield County Council do hereby proclaim October 6th through 12th, 2019, as Fire Prevention Week throughout this county, and urge all the people of Fairfield County to be aware of their surroundings, look for available ways out in the event of a fire or other emergency, respond when the smoke alarm sounds by exiting the building immediately, and support the many public safety activities and efforts of Fairfield County Fire and Emergency Services during Fire Prevention Week 2019.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Mr. Pope, you want to come up and receiving this, please?
Bill, now, right now, I'll send over you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of council, for adopting this proclamation, and thank all of y'all for coming out to hear this tonight. I know that's why you're here, to hear this proclamation. So I know how important this is to you guys. So thank you for the full room. As the clerk read, last year in the United States, 2,630 people lost their lives to fire, most of which occurred in home fires. And so as she also read, in today's world, in a modern construction environment, you have sometimes as less than two minutes. Okay, did you hear what I said? Less than two minutes to escape your house if you catch on fire. So we are reminding our citizens to make sure you have working fire alarms or smoke alarms in your homes, test the batteries at least monthly, and practice the home fire escape plan. If you have any questions about how to do this, you can feel free to contact our office. We have resources that can help you out, and we thank you for what you do. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Pope. Now down to our first public comment session. Before I actually have any speakers, I just want to remind everyone that items on the agenda are what we talking about. So if you have something related to the agenda, we'd love to hear about it. But if you'd mind waiting until, I think, Mr. Taylor, we're gonna try to give a brief description of what avenue we're trying to go down, so it may be a little more conducive to everybody. So, Ms. Davis, anyone sign to speak?
We have ten who wish to speak. First, Dr. Green, Dr. J.R. Green, speaking on county council meetings.
J.R. Green, District 5. Mr. Pauli is my representative. I want to speak on, obviously, statements made relative to the business of the county, particularly to the local media, and I generally don't comment on those things unless they assassinate my character and question my integrity and suggest that my actions are duplicitous. And when those things occur, I am compelled to address them. And so most recently, there were some things that were said by Mr. Pauli, and I'm assuming that he represents the county.
Dr. Green, not to cut you off, but we're trying to stick to things strictly on the agenda for this meeting.
Okay. So my statements are relative to county council meetings, things that the council is doing.
If it's not pertaining to the agenda, you're gonna be out of order, sir.
Okay. You already know what I plan to speak about, Neil.
I understand, I understand.
And so I have some concerns about things that are said by council members that assassinate my character?
I understand, but for this meeting, it is not on the agenda, so therefore I cannot allow you speak about it.
Start with all due respect, Ms. Robinson, I've been to several meetings and heard people talk about multiple things that were not on the agenda.
That was during the second public comment session.
There was no second public comment?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So I need to wait until the second public comment?
I no longer have a second public comment session.
So there's no opportunity for me to address council members who've assassinated my character, misrepresented the truth?
Yes, sir. If you can wait, we can set up a meeting, and like I said, Mr. Taylor, we'll talk about it in a few.
Yeah, but this is my point. If he publicly assassinates my character, if he publicly questions my integrity, if he publicly suggests that I'm doing duplicitous things, why do I need to address that privately?
Because that's the order of the agenda, sir.
Okay. You ready to meet, sir?
Yes, sir.
So I respect your opinion, but I have some serious concerns about that, chair.
I understand, yes, sir. Thank you.
Next, Ms. Robin Austin, speaking on Zion Hill.
You can come up here, Ms... Come on up here.
I'm calling about the county. I'm so glad to see you back with us. I wish you had us with Fairfield County, Zion Hill, boy. Ricky and Paulie, y'all. But anyway, as far as I hear them talk about, how are the dudels they talk about, Quake McMasters, we pay for these county equipments. Why the county can't cut down this stuff? Some of this stuff is the county stuff. All them vines down there by the park, that's county stuff. That's not our stuff. And if you can't do it, give us the tools and we'll do it. We paid for it. I know we paid for it. I don't think the county paid for none of those tools. We paid for them too. And if y'all not gonna do the work, just let us get a committee, and we'll just clean the neighborhood up. And the worse the neighborhood look, the more stragglers and drug dealers you're gonna bring into the neighborhood. And you know this, and I will tell you another thing to it, I don't care who getting mad. Whoever represents Zion Hill, county councilor, whoever, they don't... I know more people on Zion Hill than I've been out of state for 40 years than they do. If you ready to go and talk to these people besides when it's time to get votes, you'll know who the drug dealers is, you'll know who the homeless is, you'll know who the working people is. People don't know you. I'll be out campaigning for you because I know you. But you need to campaign for yourself. You need to get out and know these people. If you know these people, you probably could tell Ricky who's selling drugs. You could, because they're gonna talk to the officials more than they would the policeman. Come on, nobody's doing nothing, not just these people. Everybody have a position, and the position is to tell us what to do. It's similar to the White House to me. Only thing is, ain't nobody resign. I don't see no difference. I don't see nobody doing nothing, and I'm not prejudiced, but there has been nothing done in these black neighborhoods for years and years and years. Nobody has done nothing. They have not built nothing, they ain't did no streets. Then they tell you, you can't have bumps in the street. We don't need bumps, we got humps. Holes. So they must have a deal with the car dealers because they're making everybody's cars get out of the lot. I don't understand. I've been gone, and I swear this place was better before I left. And I don't know who represent, and I don't really care. And it's a bad thing we got if you black, we vote for you.
to obviate the public's right to speak, which is very disheartening, I'm here to encourage
That stuff don't work, because you know us better than anybody. You need to get out and campaign in the neighborhood and know the people.
you to reinstate that part of the council prerogative for the council, I mean for the
I've been back here about 12, maybe 13 years off and on. I know more, I know everybody in the neighborhood.
public to be able to speak to the council. It's a violation of our rights, and whatever it takes for that to happen, I don't want
Our representatives don't know nobody. Sometimes they'll send other people out to get their votes because they know they don't
to be meeting in a back room with any individual when I can do it publicly.
know the people.
So I urge you and all the council to get a backbone and get a right and dignity back
They know they not doing nothing for the neighborhood. Everybody say, why you won't run? No, I ain't got no bulletproof windows.
to the public to speak to this council to our concerns.
I'm gonna say what I want to say, but there's nothing done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My time is up.
Next, Ms. Nicola Hemphill, speaking on Zion Hill.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
See you at the next meeting.
Next, Ms. Sue Rex, speaking on county council meetings.
Mr. Chairman, I was planning to make some public comments regarding the arcing of the
Good evening. A little short.
roof, but since we cannot do that tonight, I'll just leave my comments.
Nicola Hemphill, District 7. Mr. Gilbert is my representative, but I am a child of Zion Hill.
Thank you, that's fine.
I grew up there, and I just wanted to speak on that if I could in regard to the grant.
Next, Mr. Kamayu Marcheria, speaking on the agenda.
I attended meeting number two. I was not aware of the first meeting, and I was invited and I attended the meeting assuming that this was revitalizing Zion Hill, of which I am all for. I find out that that's not necessarily the case, and I understand that there are some things that we must do before we can do anything else, before we can build it up, we may have to clean it up first. So I do understand that. My concern is that there are a number of business owners, landlords who own property, and on behalf of the Zion Hill community, I am concerned that those who are not in a need base are going to be the beneficiaries of this grant and this demolition of the 40 properties that we were told at the second meeting, that there were going to be 40 homes that will be demolished. And I am concerned that those who don't need this necessarily will be beneficiaries of this. And as I canvass Zion Hill, I counted about 40, I'm sorry, I counted about 26 vacant or abandoned properties. I also counted a number of maybe about three or four businesses. So I do believe that there is about 40 or so. I do get that. However, what I believe and what I would recommend that we do, again, I don't know the details of the grant on behalf of the residents, I did request that we see that, and hopefully that will happen soon, asking that we publish that and put that up on the county website so those of us from Zion Hill would be able to see that and to be able to see what that's all about. But what we can do in lieu of, if this is the case, if there are landlords that own these properties, let them demolish their own homes, and let's take that money and repair the streets. I understand that there is a need to revitalize the community, but I think there should be an order to it. I think that those who are in need and the homeowners, that they should be the ones who are the recipients of that and not necessarily those who can pay for themselves. I would like to see an ordinance in place for those who do own these properties, for something to be done, for something to be enforced for that. And ultimately, what we looking at right now is waiting to get our hands on the grant so that we can look at it, and then we'll take next steps from there.
Next, Mr. Jeff Schaefer, speaking on county council meetings.
First, I hope you heard Reverend Gibson's words. I hope they're in your heart and your mind when you listen to people here tonight. I'm gonna try to be calm. I'm not gonna try to insult anybody or attack anybody, but I'm gonna say a few things, and you can do whatever you want to do. County Council, I'll read a couple things to you. Edgefield County Council is responsible for governing the county. Members of the county council hold a two-year term and are part of a leadership team that is responsible for guiding the county's growth, development, health, and safety. They are responsible for identifying and communicating the direction in which the county should move. County Council is also responsible for adopting the policies and budgets that will move the county in that direction. Amendment seven, which was noted by the attorney, is in the bylaws. I want you all to hear this, that the majority of council members sitting here tonight, if four of you say, I want to do something different in the bylaws, and you four agree, that we'll go into the bylaws and make a change. Is that not correct? It only takes a majority? You read the bylaw?
Mr. Schaefer, are you...
Well, that's the bylaw.
On the agenda, sir?
Well, that's what I want to get across, that in order to do things, we have to have a majority. Not one person rules. You're in charge of the agenda, which is fine, but the bottom line is, and I don't agree with Mr. Marcheria, where is he? I haven't agreed with that man since I know him, but tonight I do. That's all I'm gonna say. Good night.
Next, Mr. Thomas Armstrong, speaking on county council meeting.
I would like to, good evening, I would like to adjourn my topic. Currently is county council meeting. I would like to adjourn it to county, county, and Zion Hill. Since I've noticed that Zion Hill granted is on here, and everybody's allowed to say whatever they want to say, as long as they use the word Zion Hill. I have something to say. First thing I want to say is that, have my time start? Okay. I'm fast talking. First thing I want to say is that, one I am on the agenda that I do want to discuss is the proposal of alternating to one meeting for the last three months of the year. Hope also when y'all decide this, you also decide to reduce your payment. Instead of 1,500 for the whole month, you should only get half of what you're getting now, because you're only requesting to do half of the work. All right? The next thing I would like to say is that, you know, it's a violation...
Could we keep the comments silent in the public, please? Continue.
Okay. I want to make sure my time has started. At the end of the day, when we talk, you all are elected by the people to represent the people. Don't forget that. When you get too much power, you tend to forget whom you belong. Zion Hill is dear to my heart. Mr. Chairman, I know you spent many, many years up on Zion Hill. But when we abuse power and we allow administrators to abuse power, we're not representing Zion Hill. When you take the taxpayers' money and allow the taxpayers' money to be spent the way you all see without going through the policies that you all put in place, not representing Zion Hill.
Mr. Armstrong, we covered this the last meeting. I told you that the policies, procedures were, went about the right way. So if we keep, why do we have to keep harping on that, if it's done the right way?
I understand, sir. Typically, there's no conversation between county members and spokespersons.
I understand that, but at this point in time, I'm gonna rule you out of order if you continue.
No, I can, I'm talking about Zion Hill, sir. Now, and I would appreciate if you not interrupt me, if you want to talk to me about what I'm talking about, make an appointment on my schedule like we have through county council. So what I was saying, being in the mind of Zion Hill, since Zion Hill is on the docket, when we say things that's not true, then we get a little concerned if we want to remove people's right to speak, and that's not right. So I go on to say that, in the spirit of being from Zion Hill and with the grant that you all are proposing from Zion Hill, it is improper to take monies from the citizen of Fairfield County and take care of personal items.
Grant money is grant money, Mr. Armstrong. So thank you, you are out of order. Thank you for your time.
I am not out. So like I was saying, you can run, but you can't hide.
Next, Ms. Shirley Green, speaking on county council meetings.
Well, it's really very difficult to stand here today, because when we talk about county council meetings, our citizens' rights are certainly being trampled upon. We're talking about just a couple of meetings or three, just one meeting a month coming up. Evidently, we have very little business to take care of in this county to have that view of meetings. Are we considering the taxpayers of Fairfield County? When we take a look at Zion Hill and all of the other kinds of things, where are we now? You know? Have you ever taken a thought to say, where are we? We're losing population, folks. We have negative population growth. The taxes are increasing because our businesses are not generating enough tax revenue. We have a lack of affordable housing. We have a lack of infrastructure. We have a lack of transportation. We have a lack of adequate healthcare. We have a lack of internet access. We have substandard housing. And I would add, we have a lack of vision. We can stand here, we can sit here, we can cancel meetings, we can cancel the right of the public to speak. But what we cannot cancel is the pain that these people feel in Fairfield County, that the residents feel. We cannot cancel the fact that people cannot get to their doctors for care. We cannot cancel all of the kinds of public partnerships, public-private partnerships that are available to us, but we have, and we do, and we continue to find excuses as to why we do, because the council chairman rules. So sit there, folks, not have a voice. Sit there, folks, not speak up. Sit there, folks, and let your county go down the drain, because black, white, or blue, we're all in this together. There is no council without a vote. You put everyone up here, and you put them trusting that they were going to represent you adequately, and you find that it's not happening. You find that power and control is the rule of the day, and we're okay with that. So as long as they divide and conquer, as long as it's white and black, as long as it's rich or poor, then all of us lose. Stand up, Fairfield County. You stand for something, or you'll fall for anything.
Next, Ms. Jackie Workman, speaking on scheduled.
I had a whole book, but I don't want to be like Dr. Green. All right, I'm ready. To Chairman Robinson and council members, Jackie Workman, District 4, and I'm kind of hoarse, but I want you to hear what I gotta say. If council, if council is going to vote one meeting for the next three months, then council needs to reduce their pay accordingly. That way, you won't be cheating the taxpayers, or you won't be stealing from them. This way, you will be held to the same standards as the employees. If they miss work, they are... Because the council chairman rules. So sit there, folks, not have a voice. Sit there, folks, not speak up. Sit there, folks, and let your county go down the drain because black, white, or blue, we're all in this together. There is no council without a vote. You put everyone up here and you put them trusting that they were going to represent you adequately, and you find that it's not happening. You find that power and control is the rule of the day, and we're okay with that. So as long as they divide and conquer, as long as it's white and black, as long as it's rich or poor, then all of us lose. Stand up, Fairfield County. You stand for something, or you'll fall for anything.
Next, Ms. Jackie Workman speaking on scheduled.
I had a whole book, but I don't want to be like Dr. Green. All right, I'm ready. The Chairman Robinson and council members, Jackie Workman, District Four, and I'm kind of hoarse, but I want you to hear what I gotta say. If council, if council is going to vote one meeting for the next three months, then council needs to reduce their pay accordingly. That way, you won't be cheating the taxpayers, or you won't be stealing from them. This way, you will be held to the same standards as the employees. If they miss work, they are paid for their time worked. And I'm glad you all looking at me like that, because I want you to get it in. It was told to me that in Hilton Head, Mr. Taylor requested this option because he was tired of people coming to the council meeting, getting on him or challenging him. I have heard several people come up here at this podium, time and time again, wanting to reduce Mr. Michael Trapp's pay for having leaving early.
If we could, just, let's not use names, just use council member if you could.
Well, how you gonna know who I'm talking about?
Or just address me, please.
I'm not talking with you, though. No difference. The school district meets once a month with half pay. So should you. I wonder will council make the front page of the paper with your picture reducing your pay? And I have a freedom of information request that I would like answered in a timely manner because I have submitted to ever since July ninth, and I have not received it, but I did receive a letter from Smith Robinson, where Mr. Morgan is associated, stating that I would get the information before or after or on August twenty-ninth, and I do know how to count. And I tell you, it's almost September twenty-ninth, and I have not received anything, Mr. Chairman. Why is that? And I know you know.
We're working on it.
Huh?
I'll get with Mr. Morgan to find out, but thank you.
But you could cut me off. But you supposed to know that, why I haven't received it. But I already know why, and I know why we can't come talk. But I, I'm gonna say this, I'm gonna sit down.
Thank you.
I'm not gonna meet with anybody, that's the problem.
Next, Mr. Randy Bright speaking on council meetings, October, November, December.
Randy Bright, District One, Ridgeway, Fairfield County. I have two issues with the upcoming meetings. First of all, reducing the number of meetings. We're hardly a county that we can cut back on work. We have the sixth worst unemployment rate in the state. We have declining population. We have a fifty million dollar lead weight of physical debt thanks to FFC. We've kept the millage rate, but our taxes are still going up. We've got too much work to do to cut back on meetings. We've got way too much work. I mean, if a football team is down thirty to nothing at halftime, is that the time that you put in the subs and give up? No. This is not the time to give up on Fairfield County. If I was you guys, I'd schedule more meetings, but not cut back on meetings. Don't give up on the county. Don't give up on us. This is the time to get going. You've got some good things in the hopper right now. Let's not let them get away from us because we've cut back meetings. Don't give up on the county. The other party is obviously the agenda. The difference in having a public commentary and a one-on-one private meeting is found in the word "public." An informed public is an educated public and can help us move forward. A public that's kept in the dark will give up on the county themselves. So we're gonna give up on the county because you won't listen to us. Now, I'm on TV now. We've got three newspapers represented in this room. How many television cameras and newspapers will be on my one-on-one meeting with Jason Taylor? None. Absolutely none. We've got to move forward. We don't want to move backwards. And you guys have done some good things lately, but this next meeting schedule, giving up on the county because it's a holiday season. The unemployment doesn't take a holiday, the lack of these other things that Shirley Green noted and others noted, they don't take a holiday. In fact, that's the time when we roll up our sleeves. That's the time that we really can get something done and involve the public. Don't shut out the public, please. Get us with public notifications, not one-on-one. Hear our voices in public, so the public can hear them too. And, you know, I was gonna praise you guys about some things tonight, but you didn't have a second session, so I can't praise you. Thanks.
Thank you. That concludes the public comment session.
Thank you. There are no public hearings now down to ordinance resolution and orders. Item A, Resolution Number 2019-7 authorizing an amendment to the master agreement governing I-77 corridor, regional industrial park buy-in between Fairfield County, South Carolina, and Richland County, South Carolina, to expand the boundaries of the park to include certain real property located in Fairfield County and other related matters. Do I have a motion?
Move.
It's been moved improperly second. Ms. Taylor, if you could, have some discussion on it, please.
This is akin to what we do when other economic development projects come in. In order to offer any kind of incentive to work with them in that respect, you have to first of all, put them in a multi-county park. That is a state law, it's a kind of a legal construct, so you put them in that initially, and then that opens up your ability to do fee-in lieu ofs either, should you choose to, you don't have to, you're not required. But again, this is the first step.
Any further questions from council? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it six to zero. Now down to item B, Resolution Number 2019-09, to provide required local match for the Zion Hill Fortune Springs Park neighborhood revitalization project community development block grant, CBDG, application and other related matters. Do I have a motion?
Move.
It's been moved improperly second. Any discussion? Ms. Taylor, you want to?
Certainly. CBDG, community development block grants, are something that I think the county should more aggressively go after, and this particular one with Zion Hill is something I think that is desperately needed to do community redevelopment, revitalization. So our community development department has been working on this, they've got it put together. The last thing that we need as part of that is for council to commit the match. The grant will be a fifty thousand dollar, or five hundred thousand dollar grant, and we have to put a fifty thousand dollar match toward it. That's a ten percent minimum. If the project does go over, we would have to bring it back to you, and you may have to go up if we choose to expand the project. But currently, as the way we've got it submitted, it'll be a five hundred thousand dollar grant with a fifty thousand dollar match.
Thank you. Any further questions from council? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it six to zero. Now down to our boarding commission minutes. We have one receiving information from the Aeronautics Commission. Any council member has any questions in reference to it? If not, on to our new business. Item A, discussion concerning county council meetings for October, November. In actuality, it's not December because December's already set, so it's technically for November and December. The new calendar meeting is in the agenda packet. Do I have a motion?
No.
Is there any second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, I would like to amend the motion to keep the meetings for October and November.
We already have a motion currently on the table.
Yeah, that's why I want to amend that motion.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Motion's been made to amend the amendment. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Nays for to two approvals. So now, back to the original motion, still on the table. You have any discussion? Do I have a vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
So that's five, that's four-two or five-one? Four-to-two in favor. Now down to item B, receipt of information regarding proposed penny sales tax. Mr. Morgan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of council. Give me just a moment, I'll try to get everything set up here with this technology. Wanted to provide information to council tonight as it relates to the possibility of what's known as colloquially as a penny tax, a penny sales tax, and what council can do with regards to that. So first, I'll talk about, and I don't have a PowerPoint presentation about it, but I wanted to just provide an overview, is what's known as a local option sales tax. And that is a one-cent sales tax that county council can, based upon a referendum approval, once it goes before the voters, enact a one-cent sales tax on the gross proceeds of sales within the county. And that's what it is. Now, what happens is, is that local option sales tax is basically, it was designed to help provide property tax relief to the residents of Fairfield County, because the tax is applied to any and all sales, so it's not just residents or citizens of Fairfield County that are subject to that tax, it's anybody. So if they're travelers, if there's individuals that are tourists visiting, they would be responsible for paying that tax. But what happens is, is there are guidelines and limitations on what you can do with the revenue generated from that tax. And first and foremost, at least seventy-one percent of the revenue collected must go into a property tax credit fund. And again, that's monies that would be calculated to provide property tax relief. So for example, if your property tax bill is five hundred dollars, it may be reduced to four hundred based upon the amount of revenues collected with that local option sales tax. So if you have a pot of money, and let's say a hundred dollars is collected, at least seventy-one dollars, seventy-one percent, has to go into that property tax relief fund. The remaining twenty-nine percent, then, that is the amount that could be, it's split between the county and the municipality, and there's a formula, it's not just a fifty-fifty split, there's a formula that provides for how that money is spent out. And then those funds, whatever that remaining amount is that's collected and that is assigned pursuant to the formula to the county, could be used either for further property tax relief or could be added for local governmental operations. So again, this is a vehicle that is typically used in, for property tax relief. So we can go into further detail at a later date in time, because I understood, and the reason why we're gonna have this presentation, is it relates to a capital project sales tax. And the focus of those types of sales tax is to provide for typically infrastructure upgrades, roads, water, sewer, buildings, et cetera. So we've got the presentation, and I'll call out next slide. Not that fast. I thought, keep on backing up. All right, so what we have here is the Capital Project Sales Tax Act, and that's something that the county can consider. And what that does is, is based upon ultimately a referendum that is voted on and approved by the taxpayers and the citizens, allows for a one-cent tax. Now, the county can also, as part of it, issue bonds, but we'll discuss that in a little bit detail earlier, or later on, excuse me. But it's, that one cent is collected for a limited or specific purpose and is only collected for a limited duration. So it can be pursuant to the law, up to eight years in two-year increments, and then it also allows for, it can be reimposed, or basically renewed one time for an additional seven years. Okay? Now, the statutory, for those who wants to go, want to go home and put themselves asleep by reading this, it's found at South Carolina Code annotated four-dash-ten-dash-three-hundred, and that provides all of the details there. Talking about capital project sales tax, you have to look at what are projects, qualifying projects. For example, like we talked about, you've got roads, bridges, they've been used in parking, like in downtown municipal areas for parking garages, governmental buildings, you can use them for cultural or recreational or historic facilities. I believe in this instance, there's an interest to use these funds for a water and sewer project, and in other counties that are along the coast, you have a possibility for flood control. Now, you ask yourselves, why do you want to use a capital project sales tax? Well, we talked earlier about the fact that the funds could be collected, but then the county could issue a bond. So basically, the numbers would be run by the Department of Revenue indicating a certain amount would be expected to be collected over the life of whatever the tax is, be it two years or eight years. The county could theoretically, if it decided to issue bonds and pay for those bonds with the tax that is collected. That is a possibility, obviously it's a decision that would have to be made, but if the county does do that, then those bonds that are paid for by the capital project sales tax are not subject to the eight percent debt ceiling that state law requires. What happens with that capital project sales tax, again, it provides that the funding for the projects are not solely on the residents or citizens or property owners, because anybody that purchases products and is be subject to the tax would pay for it. The tax is limited in time. The statute says it can be no more than eight years or reimposed for an additional seven years. So it's not just going on out forever. And again, it's imposed in addition to other already existing sales and use taxes. So you ask yourself, okay, how do you actually implement that? What's the mechanisms in order to do that? And what'll happen is, is the county will pass a resolution creating a capital project sales tax commission. That commission will constitute six people or six members, three of whom will be appointed by county council, the other three will be appointed by the municipalities or the towns in Fairfield County. And there's a formula by which the number of citizens determines the representation and who gets to pick. The commission will then have a series of meetings, hear proposals, and it's basically the commission's decision at the end of the process to formulate a referendum question that will be brought to the voters. Okay? That referendum question will, and these are just some of the highlights, will list the specific projects, if it's singular, just project, but if it's multiple projects, then they will have a priority listing. So if the revenues come in, the first project will get paid off, then any remainder taxes collected would go to a second, a third, or a fourth project. It'll include the estimated project cost, the maximum amount of time that the capital project sales tax would be imposed, again, in two-year increments up to eight years, and then it also will provide for the voters to question whether or not they want to have bonds issued in order to kind of pay upfront and get the sales tax to pay those bonds off on the backside. The ordinance itself, again, will lay out all that information we just talked about, the purpose for the tax, the maximum time, the maximum project cost, whether there's gonna be bonds, and any other conditions that the commission would want to put on the expenditure of those funds. Now, just kind of looking ahead, some type of deadlines and important dates, we talked about the process. You have the resolution by county council establishes the commission. Then the commission will begin having those meetings and start figuring out what projects, then it will help formulate that referendum question and that ordinance that will go before the voters. Looking forward, again, because of the way this would happen, it happens in a general election year, this would be next year. So you're talking about next mid-August, that the referendum question would be submitted to the county election commission, and then the deadlines go from there. You've got a mid-October, trying to see if I'm paying attention here still. Go back one if you don't mind. You got a mid-October, that's when the actual, the election commission will publish the referendum question in the newspapers, no different than an ordinance, you have to have publication.
Talking about advertising.
Basically, publicly advertising. You've got the November general election in which the voters will decide. The election commission has until November thirtieth to actually certify the results. Week after that, the county council declares the results of the referendum, and if it is passed, the tax then gets to be collected beginning on May first of the following year. So using our timeline, that would be May one of 2021. So you get the election results, again, the tax begins to be collected on that May first. There are some exemptions. You'll see there, it lists that unprepared food in general is exempt from that, also prescription medication sales, there's not a one-cent sales tax on that as well. And the way mechanistically this happens, the sales tax would be collected, and then quarterly, those funds are remitted back to the county by the Department of Revenue. So again, you can talk about financing, you can do it one of two ways, and go to the next slide, that's just a little picture there. We've got bonds, the county, if the voter's so approved, could issue those bonds. Again, it allows you to pay for the projects upfront and collect the money and pay it back over the series of the life of the tax. Got to be careful, though. Typically, you don't want to, for example, establish a project, and we'll just use a round number, ten million dollars, and then issue ten million dollars worth of bonds, because there could be some differentiation between the amount of tax that's actually collected. So it would probably be wise and best practices to put it probably about seventy-five to eighty percent of that value.
Mr. Morgan?
Mr. Morgan, does our borrowing capacity affect us with, would it affect us with those bonds?
Again, the capital project sales tax is not subject to that eight percent debt limit, so the amount that the ceiling that the county currently has wouldn't impact it. I can't speak for the bond market and what type of rates the county would get, I don't know exactly how that would play out. Bond council would probably have a better feel for that. But no, it wouldn't, the county would not be subject to their remaining balance.
Okay, Mr. Morgan.
Yes, ma'am.
While I'm thinking about it, at the end of that time, the limitations, would we need to go back and do another referendum? How would we do that when the projects are not completed?
If, if the council, if the project's not completed and they want to reimpose that tax, then yes, ma'am, a new referendum would have to go forward before the voters, and there's a process that allows for that as well.
Another seven years.
For, for up to another seven years, yes, sir. So that's, and just looking briefly, I try to give you an idea, this is not the most accurate, I think there's one more county that's been added a capital project sales tax, but you're looking at approximately fourteen counties across the state right now that have a capital project sales tax. So, again, you have just a few frequently asked questions, because I'm just trying to provide an overview. What happens if you collect more money than you, than you anticipated? Those excess funds have to be used to finance or pay for the capital project that was chosen. It can't just be used for any type of revenue that the general county fund could use at that point in time. And then again, can a subsequent referendum be held to renew or extend a capital project sales tax, like the vice chairman asked? Yes, ma'am, you can do that, another referendum extending that for another seven years. So again, that's kind of a little bit of a quick overview, wanted to give the council and the public some information. I'll try to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Council have any questions? Thank you, Mr. Morgan.
Thank you.
Now down to our county administrator's report, Mr. Taylor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First thing, I'm very glad to announce Vulcan Materials will be expanding here in Fairfield County. They currently operate a quarry in Blair, they're looking to operate a new quarry, it'll be located just south of State Road forty-one, between I-77 and Route twenty-one here in Fairfield County. They're looking to invest eighteen million dollars, it'll be hiring fifteen new employees with a payroll of about one point three million a year. It's located on a nine hundred and ten acre site, but they're only going to be impacting about a hundred and twenty acres in the center of that site. But we are working with them and look forward to them opening the new plant. They anticipate, I think, twelve to sixteen months before they'll be taking granted out of that particular quarry. Next item I had is update on the Fairfield County Airport. I do have our airport director here, I'll let her talk to some of these issues, but I think we've got finished the roadway, the access road into the airport, the parking lot, working with the county transportation committee, they funded that, so we're very happy that that's complete, and you've started on the fuel farm, if I understand correctly.
Yes, sir, finally. After two years, we've been working on it. So, good evening, council, good evening, Mr. Chair, Mr. Taylor. Mr. Taylor has asked me to come and speak, and, I'm sorry, citizens of Fairfield County. This is just going to be a quick update, we started on the fuel farm, and also the paving lot, the parking lot and the, the road into the airport facility has been paved. So we'll start with the paving. They began on eight nineteen, and I know those pictures are a little dark, because we have brand-new black pavement. Our whole parking lot is paved, the road from Kelly Miller, all the way in, down Runway Road into the airport facility has been paved. We're waiting on probably another week or two, before they'll come back and do the markings on the parking lot and the roadway. And we have some dirt and grass that's going to go on the edges, we have two inches of asphalt that's been placed on the whole roadway and the whole parking lot. They also paved a couple roads into our airport facility through the main gates, which they actually volunteered to do those, those parts while they were out there, and they greatly needed it. So everybody come out and look at our new pavement, it's great. Okay, our two-year project that we've been working on with the fuel farm has begun. We had a pre-construction meeting on September thirteenth, all parties that attended are listed there. That's including the company that is contracted to complete the fuel farm, along with their subcontractors, electrical and concrete companies. I did request that they use local contract subcontractors, and these were the local subcontractors that they came up with, Chapin Concrete and DNB Electric out of West Columbia, South Carolina. Work began on the site the following Monday, which was September sixteenth, and they began breaking ground for the concrete pad. And we've been working on the three-phase electric, which we discussed probably about a month ago. Our part of the electrical, our meter can and breaker box is almost complete, and has been inspected, I'm sorry, that part of it has been completed, our part of it, and all the electrical for our part has been installed and inspected and cleared. And the concrete pad now, they put the conduit under, under the pad for the, the electrical, and as soon as they laid that conduit, they were able to pour the pad. So here you see a few pictures of our electrical, here's where they were putting in the conduit, the rigid conduit, under the concrete pad for the, the tanks to go on. And we have our concrete bollards, we're set right there, that are going to go on the front and the rear of the tanks. And then you have the rebar that, go back one more, we have the rebar for the concrete, we're going to have eight-inch concrete on that pad. Some drainage issues were discussed, so we shouldn't have any water standing on it, and, next picture. And then, we just poured the concrete today. So, the concrete has been poured, we'll probably have about two weeks before they can get on the concrete. And the tanks, next one, are actually in Titusville, Florida, at the manufacturer, and they are having parts put on them. When they come in, everything will be complete, all they have to do is hook up the electrical, hook up some piping to a remote dispenser box for the jet A tank, and we will have a card reader system put in, and everything should be complete, next picture, want a couple more pictures. This is the schedule of construction, and we should be complete by the middle to end of October. Next picture. Okay. Any questions?
Council have any questions for?
I don't have any questions, but I want to thank you for all the work you're doing over there.
Thank you, sir.
Really appreciate it.
Thank you, and I would love for everybody to come out and check out their airport.
Thank you.
Brian, appreciate that. The next item, as has been referenced once or twice before, the chairman has asked me to set aside Tuesdays for citizens' appointments, so anyone who wants to come in, starting at nine-thirty, every thirty minutes, you'll contact Karen, I'd be glad to talk to you about any issue you would like to talk about. Next item, the chipper site update, wanted to let council know where we are with the chipper site, or, or the incinerator, we had talked about previously. I don't think Brad's here tonight to talk about it, but I'll, I'll try to speak in his stead. We had looked at expanding, or changing the operation, expanding the chipper site back behind where currently we're chipping, and put an incinerator. We have the public come and comment on this, they're very concerned about any negative impact it might have had on their community. So what we've done is, we've looked at other sites, we've got other sites that we already own in the Commerce Center, and in the Walter B. Brown Commerce Park also. We're having Davison Floyd, the engineering firm, look at those, to, to come back with us with sites that may work. Now, we would have to work again through the permitting process, the site that we have currently does have a draft permit, it has been issued, there will be another meeting though, on October tenth, at six-thirty, six-thirty to eight, at the St. John AME Zion Church, located at four-two-two-four, on three-twenty-one here in Windsboro. We will be attending that with DHEC and listening to the public, and again, hearing their concerns, and we are exploring other opportunities.
Our county engineer couldn't do it beside JB Floyd. Didn't you, didn't you say we had a county engineer now?
We will have a county engineer coming on board within three weeks.
Did our engineer do it instead of JB Floyd?
Oh, oh, Davison Floyd.
Davison Floyd, yeah.
I don't think he could do that, he's a more structural civil engineer, I don't think he would get into the permitting process, this is more about permitting. And then the final item that I have, Ms. Johnson, if you would, I'll let you talk about DOT, we have some contact information. We met with Jamie Johnson with the DOT recently, Ms. Johnson and myself, and he gave us some information, some websites and such to look at. We always get in questions about, why is this road getting paved, or where is it at in the schedule? And he did come forth with a website that I thought was particularly informative, Ms. Johnson, if you want to give the council that information.
As Mr. Taylor said, we all get questions about road projects, issues such as hanging tree limbs, potholes, and places where signs are needed. In order to facilitate with this, in order for us as citizens to be able to check on road projects or report a road issue, we've added some things to the website. Under "I want to," you really can't see it, because we actually own the internet, under "I want to," there's a section that says SCDOT road inquiry, and also, the same link is under residence, SCDOT road inquiry. And, some of you may not have seen the forms, they're outside on the table, and one of the first forms is checking the current project list, or project viewer for SCDOT. Down to the bottom of the website, our administrator for SCDOT is Jason Johnston, we know him as Jamie, and he would be happy to talk to any of you about any road issues, if you prefer not to go through the website to do it. And his phone number is also on the website. At the bottom, it's real light, the first one is instructions, checking the current project list, project viewer for SCDOT. If you open it, you will see these instructions, it, it is step-by-step instructions on how to go on this website, and it tells you exactly what to click, it has arrows and everything on where to go, you can check a road by Fairfield County, you can see if there's a current project out there for Fairfield County, how long it will take, the amount of money DOT has set aside for it, and it also has the name and the contact person of who's responsible for that project at SCDOT. And it also has an estimated completion date. So, if you don't know what particular road you want to look at, when you go to this site, you bring it up, you can actually click on the road, and there's a legend beside it, and it's color-coded, and it tells you what type of project it is. For example, it could be rehab and resurfacing, operational and safety, widening, and new location, and emergency repair. And again, it also gives you the estimated completion date of the project. If you have any other additional questions after you look at this, then you can always contact Mr. Jamie Johnston about any more details. Also here, it has a search inquiry, where you can just type in the name of the road, the address of the road. Sometimes I don't know the address of the road, I just type in the road name, and it'll bring up, you know, I punch in Highway two hundred, it'll bring up Highway two hundred, and then I can click it, and it'll bring up that area. And if there's some color coding to it, you click on the color, and it'll tell you what project is out there. And again, this is on the website, and there's copies outside on the table. The second one is reporting an issue to SCDOT. On this particular instruction, again, it tells you how to go in and report a maintenance work request to SCDOT. You have the opportunity to put what the maintenance item is, and they have a drop-down box. So you can put anything from litter, which is an animal carcass on the road, debris pickup on the road, mowing, things dealing with the sidewalk, with shoulders, traffic signals. And I did get a request one time, that someone felt that a sign should be, was needed in a certain area. You can actually click about a sign in a certain area, and it also gives you an area where you can describe what's going on in that area, why the sign is needed, you put your email address, your phone number, all your contact information in there, and when you click submit the work request, it goes directly to the Fairfield County SCDOT office. And so I think that would be really, really helpful. So, sometimes you won't have to call council if you don't want to, or call administration, and ask about a road, because what we do is, we just turn back around and call Jamie, and get an update, Jamie Johnston, yeah. And then we contact you back. But this is a way that you can put in all your information, and explain in detail what's going on, and then he can call you or email you directly, and if you feel you like not getting the most timely response, then of course, you can still give him a call.
Administration's not going to help council members anymore, get roads taken care of?
Excuse me, say again?
Administration's not going to be able to help council members, get roads taken care of?
Well, you can still call administration, and we'll still call Jamie, and get...
Back to chair because...
Right, this is...
Just like I called you several times, and I think they told you one time, they didn't have any money.
Yes. I would have to get my update, update from him, but also, on one of the roads you called me for, he did say that he was putting in a request to ask for some money, to see if he could push one of the projects through, if he could.
They don't have any money to do the work.
Yeah, it depends on what it is, because some people have called, especially for work requests, and it was about mowing, and it was about tree limbs, and then they can go in and do those type of things. All right.
Thank you.
That's all I had, sir.
Okay. Now down to our clerk to council's report, Ms. Davis.
Yes, we have the next intergovernmental meeting, this will be hosted by the school district, and is scheduled for Monday, September thirtieth, six p.m. to seven-thirty p.m. at the Fairfield Career and Technology Center. The deadline to RSVP is this Thursday, the twenty-sixth. Also, the Institute of Government classes will be held on Wednesday, October the twenty-third. You each have a handout with the available courses, and I've noted which classes you're eligible to take. Also, the county council coalition meeting will be Thursday, October twenty-four. The classes and the meeting will be held at Embassy Suites Hotel in Columbia. If you have not already, just please let me know as soon as possible if you'll be able to attend.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Now down to our county council panel, was any council member like to be recognized? Mr. Bell.
My comments tonight are somewhat basic, although somewhat regrettable. As I've stated publicly, I was in favor of the teacher village, believing a deal could have been worked out for the best interest of the county and the school district. I believe the teacher village could have been the catalyst to spur growth within our county, could have added economic growth through purchasing of goods, and added to the tax base in just a few years, but more importantly, thirty families in our community. I saw it as a win-win. However, the puzzling thing to me was a letter shared with the press, but not shared with me and some members of council, knowing we're, knowing we were in negotiations. Companies of all types expect that a certain level of confidentiality be adhered to, because their reputation is on the line. Otherwise, it could damage the entire project, and so it did. I don't know what happened, but my father would say a dead rat is on the line somewhere. So let me explain. Mr. Michael Smith requested a letter sent to our administrator. How did he know the letter was there and its contents? So let me read. His request, "Hi Jason, in accordance with the Freedom of Information Act, I'd like to request any correspondence, including email attachments from the county originating from Dr. Sue Rex, Chair of the Fairfield County School District Foundation. That discusses the teacher village and the Gorlick Brothers' position on the county's desire for an indemnification clause in the teacher village project. In particular, I'm requesting a correspondence and attachment dated August thirtieth, twenty-nineteen, from Dave Paho to Sue Rex and Dr. J.R. Green." How did he knew, how did he know that that letter was there? Next thing is, okay, and this was, this was sent to Mr. Taylor, Friday, September thirteenth, twenty-nineteen, ten fourteen a.m. On September thirtieth, twenty-nineteen, eleven, eleven fourteen, Mr. Smith attaches the information you requested under the Freedom of Information Act. If you have any questions, please feel free to give me a call at the below number. I told of one hour for that Freedom of Information request. Thank you. request. Thank you."
Thank you, Mr. Bell. Any other council member like to be recognized?
This was a concern, something that's been given to Fairfield County, and people in Fairfield County need to know about it. Didn't see many people there to look. Drew Blair is ninth-generation Fairfield County resident. The Blair family settled from Scotland and Ireland here in the early 1700s in western Fairfield because it reminded them of home. Drew received his master's from USC in 1984, and after traveling, moved to Raleigh and opened his first art school. He returned to Fairfield County with his staff in 2007 and acted double the population in Blair overnight. He has taught in Siberia, United Kingdom, Italy, Germany, Belgium, Norway, Australia, Austria, New Zealand, Scotland, Ireland, and Japan. He's been to Australia, I think, 13 times. He has been featured in television interviews and dozens of magazine covers. A partial client list includes Budweiser, United Airlines, Continental Airlines, Procter &amp; Gamble, Pepsi, Coca-Cola, Nabisco, Nutrigeno, McDonald's, USA Today, Mattel, Paramount, Thing Part, and Texaco, just to name a few. He has taught over 9,000 students since 1997. Ten of his students are responsible for the mural thus far on the corner of Washington Street and Congress. They have traveled to Winsboro from Colorado, Tennessee, Virginia, California, Ohio, Italy, and South America. Drew is a member of many local organizations and is praying that this mural is the beginning of new Winsboro for future generations to enjoy. He plans to return next year with the crew to finish his wall, and is coordinating with Mike Kelly to paint his wall as well. Drew is a true Fairfield County treasure, and we all should be proud to call him local. I encourage each of you here tonight, after leaving here, to go and thank him and his team for bringing the talents to Winsboro. Juan de Carne deserves thanks for making this happen by coordinating all phases of the murials. I thank Neil Robinson, Council Chairman, and Jason Taylor, Council Administrator, for attending to welcome and thank you to Drew Blair.
Mr. Robinson, and I'm wondering, and you may, you may have done it already, could we send a letter from council?
Instead of a letter, I'd rather him come up and we thank him personally, if that's okay.
That's fine.
He was going to attend tonight, but his work probably didn't stop until 7:00, and he wasn't quite dressed. He's been working out there since 9:00 this morning. And they've done that since, on the 18th, 19th, 20th, 21st, 22nd, and 23rd. They're hard-working people, and he didn't mention one, but had one from Russia, too, last year happen paint.
Thank you, Mr. Douglas. Any other council member like to be recognized? Councilman Gilbert?
Good evening.
Good evening.
It is my understatement, understanding that a statement was made that this council is an embarrassment to Fairfield County for stopping the teacher village project. Two things. We did not stop this project. If, and I emphasize if, following procedure and the legal advice of our council is an embarrassment to Fairfield County, then that's what it is, an embarrassment. It is so important that no matter how great something looks, that you make sure everything is in order. The truth of the matter, and this is my opinion, it appears that the developer never felt comfortable with this project. It's obvious by its email and its withdrawal note. They found a way out by rejecting the indemnity clause. My parents taught us coming up, if you believe strongly in something, and it didn't work out, don't blame someone else because it didn't work out the way you thought it was. Get up, shake the dust off, go another right route, but make sure it's legitimate, a legitimate way of accomplishing your dream. If Plan A doesn't work, then have a Plan B. I felt, and still feel, that the teacher village is a great idea. The only thing I saw was that the developer was not all in. In every major deal, if there are differences, you meet, you talk about those differences, Gorlick wouldn't meet with us. So those of you accusing council of sabotaging this project, let's get our facts together. We did everything we could to make this project work. The only thing we refused to do was sign a blank check that may or may not have caused the county problems in the future. What we do as council is serious and shouldn't be taken lightly. Everything we do will not be accepted by everyone, but this is not a popularity contest. It is about doing what is right. We want projects in this county just as bad as you do. No matter how great a project may look, it doesn't make sense. If it doesn't make sense, I'm not voting for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gilbert. Vice Chair Goines?
Thank you. Okay, just on a few, want to touch on a few things. The person that mentioned about the blight in the community, I want to say to the families and neighbors on Fishhook Road, I want to say thank you. And she made a statement about getting a committee. We didn't go out and get a committee, but I want to thank Code Enforcement Officer Monica Johnson for coming out and having a meeting with us and helping us and giving supplies and things that we need to help clean up our community ourselves. And I think this is about the fourth month that we're still working on that project, and we help one another. That's how it started. It has to start with us first, and then other people will come in sometimes and help. But I want to thank them for doing that and for public works. They have taken so far five containers of debris and all kind of stuff out of our community. The second thing, I want to thank our neighbors for public safety, because I reached out, and I said, is anybody willing to put a street light on their property? And so some did. And that lit up our street, and that's, and some will continue to, will continue to do that. And I thank them for that. We've talked to Dominion, they called, put in a work order, and yes, it's $10 extra on your light bill, but for the children that we have in the community that ride bikes, people walk the road at night, to help keep down gang activity, drug activity, it was necessary for us. So we have to sometimes step up and make a sacrifice for safety for ourselves, to do things ourself. Once one community began to do that, others will begin to do it. The next statement is on good things. Good things are happening in Fairfield County. Good things have already happened. There's so many projects and businesses and developments that have come in in the past three years. It's just amazing, but nobody talks about them. We don't see them. They're not being advertised. Good works are going on. Anybody that has been in business for any length of time, have any kind of organization for any length of time, know that the productivity of your project, of your meeting, of your company does not stop and end with just a few meetings. All of the hard work is done behind the scene, all of the meetings, all of the hassles, all the things, the challenges that you meet, is done behind the scene. When you come to the table, it's only just a little tad. And so it don't take a long time to do that, because you have a lot of work behind you to do. So when you're saying we're cutting the meetings back, we're cutting work, no, we're giving opportunity to work. We're giving access to work. Mr. Taylor, nobody really realized, I don't think, unless you're doing it and you have his demeanor, recognize what he does. Chairman Robinson and so many others, meeting all the time, working with different people, talking, communicating. They call, we call, we have meetings. All of this work goes on behind the scene, but there's never anyone that comes out and say, well, okay, we understand. And you should understand, because many of you sitting in this room are business owners, and you know how things go. If you're not a business owner, you're a family person, and you know what it takes to keep your family going. And it's not just having dinner at the table. A lot goes on behind the scene after you leave the table. So to say that we're letting go on Fairfield County, no, we're only gearing up. We're pushing harder, we're pushing faster. We want more things to happen. There are people connecting with us. The collaboration is just awesome, and I thank God for the people that have that kind of demeanor, that can get out, step up, and work with other people to bring betterment of life to Fairfield County. Transportation, someone touched on that. That's already in play. In fact, someone representative was up, I believe, the last meeting, and talked about transportation and how they're working on that to improve it all the way out throughout the county. All those things are implemented. They're not in a dream. They're not in a vision. They're already in action. And I asked Chairman Robinson, and he's going to work with it, to bring together a video that showcases Fairfield County, and yes, have a special meeting, a special time, a special place set, so that everybody can see what's going on in Fairfield County. That's really good. And my last question is, where are the peacemakers? Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Goines. Anyone else want to discuss? I just wanted to touch bases on a couple of things. To the lady that spoke, I am the representative of Zion Hill, but one problem I found out I ran into is that it's the city's jurisdiction. So therefore, a lot of stuff that goes on needs to go through the city first before it comes to us. But as you can, as you can see, we've kind of crossed that bridge, and now we are collaborating together to try to combat that blight and so, and things in the area, because it has been neglected for the last 30, 40 years, I would guess. Well, you about right. But another thing I want to talk on, and like Vice Chair Goines said, when it comes to having one meeting, that doesn't mean we're stopping work. You know, if I got paid by, by the meeting, I-
You're way-
I'd be way underpaid because-
And people know that.
Exactly. But I'm up here daily. I think all of us up here daily. I know Mr. Bell is, so we kind of cross paths on time to time. But we all trying to do what's, what's the betterment for the county in order to move forward. We've got a lot of good things going. I'm saddened that Gorlick, the development project failed through, but like I was told, you just don't fall, you just don't lay on the ground. You get up and get back on the horse and ride again. I've discussed with the administrator of possibly teaming with the school district and possibly doing another project, trying to put a bid out there to develop that land, because we're not just Gorlick isn't the only developer that we can depend on. We've got to keep pushing. It's going to take a team effort. I think that's about it. Well, another thing I want to talk on is, you know, as far as the public comment session, I know a lot of people are a little irritated, a little uproar about it, but a lot of, a lot of counties don't have a public comment session. Some have one meeting, some have two. It just goes, it differs by each county. This wasn't an over-the-night decision. I called around to different councils, spoke to different chairmen on how they handled everything. We're trying to do something better, more conducive. If a citizen has a legitimate complaint, contact your representative, your vice chair, or your chairman, and we can sit down and have a meeting with Mr. Taylor to discuss things and come to a conclusion on how to make things better. That's exactly what we're trying to accomplish. Nothing is in stone, but we are trying to make things better. I've heard the comment that we are silencing citizens' First Amendment right. Mr. Morgan, can you elaborate on that, if you may?
Yes, sir. The decision just to go to, from two public comments to one, again, it is common across the state for to have difference. I know there's some councils that have zero public comment time, one and two. The allegation that a, there's been a constitutional violation by the removal of the second public comment session is an incorrect assertion. There's always the opportunity for a citizen of the public to come meet with their representatives and speak. They obviously have many different ways and avenues to do that. If you sit there and say that by taking away the second public comment abridges a person's right to speak, well, then you can make the argument that only having 10 spots abridges the 11th, 12th, 13th, 14th person's right to speak as well. So there's not been a decision that is a constitutional violation arises to anything to that level. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. Vice Chair Goines?
Mr. Chair, if I may, just kind of comment briefly on that. I think the decision is just an awesome thing. When I think about all the violence and hate and everything that's going on in the world today, and when we get to a point that we cannot sit down and reason together, we are in a terrible crisis. To be able to do that and to be able to teach our children to communicate right, we as adults are going to have to start doing that, whether it's with business or anything else. And to be able to bring it to the point that we can just sit down, one or two, two or three together, and just reason on things, and as you say, try to make it better, that's an awesome move for us. And I hope others will begin to adopt the same thing in our homes, in our businesses, wherever. If we can just learn how to reason together, maybe we can stop some of the violence. Thank you.
I tell you the honest truth. I think that they should be allowed to voice their opinion. They come into these meetings, and they deserve to be able to be heard. Maybe we should form a committee and maybe go over and then just talk about it and see about it. Mr. Douglas, if you remember, at the beginning of the meeting, I asked, did any council member would like to amend the agenda to allow second public comment session? Everybody voted nay.
That's right.
We at the end of the meeting now, so maybe we can work on the next meeting. So, but if no other council member has anything, I-
And I don't really, don't want to let us go away from this. I think it's probably a couple, couple months ago, and I think sister, I mean, Ms. Goines talked about that a little earlier. One of the things, and I've spent some time talking to Mr. Taylor at length, there are some good things that's going on in the county, really. There are some things, we, there are industry announcements. You know, we got Quartec, we got M. Lily, we got Vulcan, got work over there at the Old Unioria Building. There's a lot of good stuff that is going on, and I don't want us to miss that piece, because, because it is. And a lot of work, a lot of activity going on, and we're working really hard to make sure we do that. One of the things, we announced M. Lily, and when we announced M. Lily, there was no communication out there in the public. Okay, I talked to Mr. Taylor about that. No one was excited about M. Lily. No one, as we went around talking. So one of the things I've asked is, is how can we not, we probably want to do a video, something like that, but we want to make sure the citizens of this county can come together in some place or the other. I don't know where that place is going to be. I've asked him to try to look at that, so we can talk about what we're doing good. And now, again, because we got to talk about the good stuff, because all too often we talk about what's, what's bad, and we do want to talk about the good stuff, and a lot of good things are going on. However, I'm like Mr. Douglas, and if you think about this thing, we should allow the public to speak to us. Okay, that, that comment section at the end is probably, to me, probably a little bit better than the first one, because they have a whole range of things they can talk to us about. And sometimes it's hard. Sometimes it's difficult for us to take. But you know what? That's why we ran for this office.
That's right.
We ran for this office. Nobody, nobody asked us to, nobody just handed us this office. We said we wanted to do that. So I am in favor of the second comment, that you don't have to talk about the agenda. And the reason is, is because people have things on their mind, and they want to talk about it, and we need to be responsive to those issues. Thank you.
Any other council member has anything? As I stated earlier, it's not a dictatorship. If you want it on the agenda, make the motion to amend. If no, if we have anything further, I'll make a motion to adjourn. I entertain a motion, I entertain a motion to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ayes, aye.